We will call to order the regular Tracy City Council meeting for Monday, April 11. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with other virginities and just as for all.
I don't see any changes to the agenda, right?
No, although I don't think we have Warren Rydell here tonight who had requested to be on public comment and so we don't necessarily have to change it, but my guess is that we won't, won't have him.
Motion approved as written.
First and second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. Anybody from the public here that would like to talk about something that is not on the agenda? Come on up darling.
I'm Tara Brendel and I'm here on behalf of the Chamber Board. We have a few concerns we'd like to bring to attention to the City Council, to one, bring awareness, and two, making working together in the future better for all of Tracy. Last weekend, we held the Prairie Women's Expo at the VMC, an annual event that brings 400 people downtown. We once again had a great turnout and this event is put on by a dedicated group of volunteers. However, we have some concerns from this weekend. One, we were told prior to the event that we would need to pay a full day rate for Saturday, rental of $400. And a half day rate on Friday, set up for $200, and we could be in the VMC in the afternoon. Two committee member volunteers came at noon to start setting up. When rates were discussed with the Chamber Director Friday, late afternoon, we were told that anything over two hours is a full day and we have to pay $800 for the event. While we understand a charge to use the space due to sewer, water, electricity, et cetera being used, we feel $800 is more than what we would have used in these entities. Secondly, we were told that we were lucky we were not being charged for the table rentals. The Tracy Chamber owns 45 of the tables. We have purchased them out of our budget and the city uses them during events and we assume based on last Friday rents them out. We set up and took down all of the tables and chairs and cleaned them all off due to how dirty they were. Three, the council is often talking about bringing people downtown and using the facilities we have. The Prairie Women's Expo did this last weekend, bringing approximately 400 people to downtown Tracy. These are the events the council would like to see and they take an enormous amount of work. We need to be able to have the space to hold these events without the cost and last minute changes making it unattainable. Four, we need the city and the Chamber to work together, not just for the Prairie Women's Expo, but for all events that we have in Tracy. As a Chamber, we strive to bring people to town because it benefits the businesses and the community of Tracy. If we have to pay $400 per day for an event, many events will not be cost effective. If we host a potato bar or walking taco fundraiser for Boxcar Days in the VMC for two hours and have to set up and clean up, we would be over the two hour half day limit. At a cost of $400, we would not be able to raise any funds towards the event. We bring these concerns to you as a City Council because it is imperative that we work together for our community. We as a board will be talking about the lease agreement at our meeting on Wednesday. In the meantime, we hope that you will openly discuss the rental of the VMC and how the Chamber and city can work together on future events that benefit our community. Thank you.
Yeah?
City Council like to have any discussion on this issue?
We should.
Yeah, we should. I don't even know where to start. I was on the council when we set up these rates, but I do think that we have it priced fairly high for events, but I don't know how to make that work through the city with everything that has to be done, I guess. I don't remember the half rate thing, I guess, so maybe there's where we can tweak that a little bit to help out.
Let me clarify what the rate schedule is, just so everybody's on the same page. So, what we have for the VMC, I'm not sure I understand what the miscommunication was on a half day rate. I can tell you that the email that Diane sent to the Chamber on February 14 clarifies that we have a half a gym rate and a full day rate and a two hour rate. So essentially, we have a rate for two hours and that would be for like, you know, practices and things like that, you know, like if the engineers want to rent it or something like that typically is what you see. And then we have a full day rate. So the fee schedule doesn't have a half day rate, so I'm not sure what the confusion was on that, but it doesn't exist. So anything from the standpoint of the fee schedule of more than two hours is considered a full day. And our rate schedule that was approved by the City Council, and you know, you remember about a year ago, we had a kind of a long discussion about how this was going to work and whatnot, was is $400 for the use of the VMC. And because, I think the Chamber got here roughly about noonish or something like that, and then would have been more than two hours on Friday, so that's what the rate schedule currently sets out. So if you wanted to, you know, make some adjustments to those rates, you could certainly do that, or you know, create a half day rate if you want, but it's not currently on the fee schedule, so we can't charge it. You know, that's what the dilemma is, and so the staff doesn't have the ability to deviate from that, I guess you could say.
With the half day that they were here, did somebody else not get to use the facility or wasn't rescheduled?
So what, yeah, so what happens is, is that we get kind of, we coordinate with the school, so if the school is using the facility, they kind of get, you know, first dibs on it. And so back in, I want to say December, the Chamber said, "We want to do the Prairie Women's Expo on this weekend, you know, is it available?" And checked with the school and it was available, and so that meant that, you know, we could use it during that time. So essentially, yeah, the school couldn't program events during that particular moment. That's part of their lease, which is a different, whole different deal, but ultimately, when they scheduled it, it meant that someone else couldn't use it, yes. That's essentially accurate.
You had mentioned the engineers use it for practice.
They do, yeah, on Sundays.
So they pay the $400 or?
No, they're only there for two, they're only there for a couple hours, so they pay the two hour rate, is that right Diane?
The two hour rate and the half gym.
For half a gym?
For half the gym.
Because they only use half the gym, so, but...
How many times have they used it then?
Several, many.
They practice weekly. I've practiced with the engineers myself actually, so I kind of understand how that works.
They're aware of this rate?
Yes.
Yeah, they pay it. Yep, they pay it.
Okay, there's one other category, there's gym rent use during business hours. That's $25. What kind of?
So that's for people to be able to come in and walk or to play basketball, you know, things like that. That's kind of set up for the home schooled kids.
What?
The home schooled kids, because they'll come in and they'll do their fire thing there or whatever.
The people that walk in the gym have to pay 25?
No.
Yeah. I guess I got mixed up there though, that's why.
Well, I would like to heartily agree with Tara and your sentiments about the need for the city of Tracy and the Chamber of Commerce to work together, absolutely. And I am really pleased that the Prairie Expo, it is a great event for the city of Tracy, it's great, great for anyone. It is a good event, and I know that a lot of volunteer work goes into that. You know, when we went over these rates a year ago, I, you know, we all agreed that we have to charge a fee schedule for the use of the VMC. And, you know, when I was thinking about it, that $400 a day, quite frankly, I wasn't even thinking about, about the time necessary for setup. I don't, I think that we can give the Chamber the benefit of the doubt and I'd be fine with charging the one day $400 and then the, then the $200 for two hours use at, for the first setup day, you know, not split hairs over essentially $200. That's my opinion.
Well, I would tend to agree with you there. I wish there would be a way, I'm not sure if that's one way to sell, but I wish there would be a way we could not have to charge them for the setup day. And I'm not talking, I'm not talking just this event for any event. And maybe that's a wrestling thing where they have to come in and set mats the day before, and I don't know if they do or don't, but do they have to come in and set the mats the day before? They're done right away in the morning, so they have to pay extra then?
No, they have the lease, the school lease, yep.
So when, so when they did the wrestling tournament though, that was that part of this, that was part of the school lease then too, you know? I mean, if it's, kind of the way that our lease works with the city and we've actually, with the school, and we've looked at this a couple of different times, is that if it's a school sponsored event of any kind, then essentially, you know, they, that's covered under the terms of their lease and there's no fee associated with that. So if like, there's a wrestling tournament or something like that, they wouldn't be charged extra for that.
Yeah, I thought we did if it was not high school wrestling, if it was kind of like, you know, like JO volleyball. I remember that being in the same discussion.
JO volleyball is not a Tracy high school or school sponsored league, it's an independent kind of thing, and so we will, and it's very specific in the lease. I've looked at it, Diane and I have looked at it, Matt has looked at it multiple times. It actually specifically lists out things like wrestling events for elementary and younger kids too, and so it includes those events. But JO volleyball is not a school sponsored program, and so that's why that's separate.
But the little folks that wrestle, that is, with type of?
Like AU wrestling or what?
If it's, if it's an event that is not Tracy school, Tracy area public school sponsored, we would charge them a fee for that. But anything that is considered a school sponsored event, no matter the age, is not just high school, they get that as part of their lease. And I'd be happy to send out the lease to everybody, and maybe I did that at one point, or maybe you asked and I forgot, I don't recall, but, but I'd be happy to send out a copy of that so you can read it, but that's the way that it works.
I mean, I'm kind of with, with everyone else when it comes to, I'm not, I'm not saying the 400, no, we just, we need to look at that rate if we want to look at that rate across the board, but the way it's set up right now, the 400 for the day that the event was, I think where we're all sitting here questioning is that half a day to set up. And that's why I was wondering about this use during business hours, that it's $25 while it was during business hours from 12 to 5 that they were setting up, and I don't know how late it went for setup.
This is, this is your policy, if you want to change it, you can change it.
But we said we didn't want to be making exception after exception, it's why we made the ruling.
And so what I would suggest that you do, if you want to do this differently, is is that you change the fee schedule. And we can bring back, we can bring something back to change the fee schedule to accommodate that retroactively. Like for example, you could change the fee schedule to add a full gym half day rate, which we don't have, and then designate what that amount is, you know, that kind of thing. But anytime somebody is using the gym, that means that somebody else can't use it, which is why we, you know, charge it ultimately, and so we're essentially just enforcing this rate. So the best way to avoid, you know, making exceptions or playing favorites is to just change the fee schedule to address the concern.
When would we look, look at this, try to figure this out tonight or next meeting or the?
Well, it'd be nice if we, if you wanted to change something, we got some direction tonight, and then we can bring it back to you the next time, and we won't, you know, do anything with the, with the Chamber until, you know, after that, but ultimately, ultimately that would be nice if we knew what it was that you wanted us to change.
I guess I'd like to see the setup fee dropped that afternoon or two hours or whatever it takes.
For everybody or just the Chamber?
Well, what, who else sets up in there other than the Chamber? I mean, the engineers don't, the JO volleyball, I don't think would. I don't, I don't know, I don't know how they do this stuff, I don't come when they're doing that, so. Does JO have to do a lot of setup or they just come and?
They're not even using the facility, I think the high school gives them some space, but...
Well, if they would come back.
I'll give you an example, the Red Cross blood drive, you know, comes in and they set up in the gym, and we charge them for the full day at the gym, for the full use when they come and do the blood drive.
Are they here most of the day?
Yeah, I think they're here the whole day, actually.
The tunnel's open 11:30 and they're gone about 8.
I can understand that then, but I'm talking about?
Additional day for setup.
Yeah, see other folks come in and set up, have to set up a day ahead so they're ready to go first thing in the morning or whatever.
I mean, it means ultimately we can't, if somebody's setting up that day, that means that we can't rent it to somebody else. Not that we have a lot of people coming in and renting the space, so that's not typically a problem, but, you know, just keep in mind that when someone else is using it, that means we can't charge somebody else for it, that's the whole point.
Would we get more use if we lowered the rent a little bit across the board?
Honestly, I don't think it makes any difference, I really don't.
I don't know.
I, we don't get a ton of rent as it is. I mean, I think what I heard from the conversation a year ago, you know, from you when you were talking about it, is that you felt like, then in the past, you know, people always, city administrators and, you know, city councils had just constantly been waiving the fees and we'd never been charging anything, and you kind of felt like, well, there's some costs associated with that, with electricity and custodial services and everything else, and that it was fair to charge something. The question is what's fair, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I, so, we can certainly modify it, I have no problem with that.
Where did we get the 400?
Where did the 400 come from Diane?
It's the full gym for a day.
No, 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 how did we come up with that? It should be $400 versus $200.
Good question, I don't even remember that.
I know we got some prices from other... Toilet paper, we've got hand towels, we have soap, we have heat, we have electricity. It was just a way of the city recouping those basic costs of somebody using it.
I think we took it out what was set before though, too, I think it was right around $200.
I think so, but I couldn't tell you, because I think that those numbers originated before we had that discussion a year ago, and we were basically just kind of continuing what we had done.
$200 for an event, what now we're talking $400 for the event. For half the gym, I think it was.
It's 200 for half a gym and 200 for the whole gym, yeah?
I don't have any problem with $400 for the whole gym for a day, I think that's reasonable.
Maybe we can do, maybe we can just do half days, set, half day and setup days or something for half, for the 200 like you talked about?
Sure, we could add that fee into the fee schedule, something like that.
Well, and I think we have to look at, you know, because what's in here for an event definition is that requiring setup and custodial. Well, they didn't use, they set up their own tables and, and stuff like that, so then it drops down.
We don't ever do setup for anybody.
And that's what it says here, event defined as over two hours requiring setup and custodial.
My understanding is, is that we don't actually do setup for any of these things. I've asked this question several times.
But there is setup required for the event.
I know, but our staff doesn't do the setup. There is some custodial associated with it, not so much the cleanup after the event, but it would include things like replacing toilet papers and emptying trash and stuff like that, and so there's a bit of custodial in there. But there's, but we don't actually physically move things around for people.
Well, if I was renting it and I read this, I would expect you to set the tables up for me.
Fair enough.
I mean, because it says requiring setup and custodial.
That's the definition of an event, is that it requires setup and custodial.
But not necessarily set up by us.
By us.
Yeah, I, I read it differently than you. I just...
Well, herpetage.
But I do think that the city of Tracy and the Tracy Chamber since we're both working for the same goal, I mean, even if we didn't, can, but then if you specifically put Tracy Chamber in there, you're going to be in trouble too, aren't you?
Yeah.
I think it's important to be fair and, you know, equitable with the fees and charging everybody the same. I mean, my suggestion to you is, is that your two choices might be either A, you know, you, you have a setup fee and you say you can have a half a day set up the day before, and then you charge a setup fee for that for some smaller amount. Or you allow a half day of setup under the day, day fee, you know, so you don't charge them a setup fee at all.
That's horrible.
Or, or the other option is that you, you, and we could do this as in addition to that, we could add a $200 half day fee as well for the full gym, which we don't currently have, which might make sense anyway. But those are some thoughts about options that you could do, you know, that would be fair to everybody.
That's the worst of it, one size don't fit all. I mean...
Well, that's, that's one of the, that's part of the challenge, I mean, you're, you're not wrong about that, I mean, certainly you're right, one size doesn't fit all, but we're, what we tried, but we also want to be fair with people too, you know?
So what does it cost to have electricity over there for like, a day out?
That's a tough loaded question.
Well, we spend in the, in the, in, at the VMC, we spend, and it's not just electricity, it's, it's, it's everything, you know, I mean, it's the staff that has to take care of it, it's the maintenance on the buildings, it's, you know, we spend roughly on utilities in this building, $35,000 a year on the whole building, but I can't, I couldn't tell you how much of that is the gym specifically.
Yeah.
Because that's the whole building. We, you know, I, so I, I don't, I don't even know what it would be.
So it's $95, $96 a day, basically, for the building.
But like I said, it's not just that, you know?
Yeah.
There's supplies, there's the wear and tear in the facility, I mean, there's, there's all kinds of issues. The question is, when you think about charging people rental rates, it's really kind of, you know, what you think is fair in the context of the market and the value, what's the value of the space? That's how people would usually look at it, what's the value of the space? Think about what the caboose would charge for something like this, considerably more.
The space is very valuable, but I would like to see it used more than it is.
Okay.
And I don't know how to do that, only way to entice anybody to use it more is lower our fees so that they would use it. But you can't give it away either.
Not necessarily.
I don't know, I don't know if there's more.
I don't know who would use it.
I don't know if it would.
Nobody would use it.
The problem I have here is I'm looking at $600 and they mentioned that they bring 400 people to town. I can't wrap my head around this. I mean, 400 people in the city of Tracy on a weekend? It's not bad folks, but we're charged on 600 bucks to get this done.
Council member, you're right about that, 100%, but JO volleyball came in and they have practices and tournaments and they said they would bring people to town too, and you said that you wouldn't waive their fee. So, any event downtown that would rent for $400 is going to bring people downtown. So you've got to, what you've got to do is you've got to balance, you know, the desire to work with people and also to be fair and equitable to everybody. That's why I outlined those options for you, you know, you can do some different, different things, and I don't hear the Chamber saying they don't want to pay a fee, they just felt like it was too much because of that, the first day.
But for instance, if we lost the JO volleyball things because they went to the school, we priced ourselves out of the market. If we was a little more reasonable, maybe we would have got them downtown where we want them, not way out there, which is my facility.
That's possible.
Nothing wrong with that, but we want them downtown so they go to the coffee shop or?
It's possible.
Go to Bonnie and Clyde's or wherever it is they want to go. So, if, if it's, if it's at all possible with this group here, let's try to lower the rates a little bit, get people back down here doing things, whatever them things are.
What do you think would be fair?
Well, don't ask her that.
I'm just, starting point here.
It's hard for us because the Chamber's never been charged before.
Tara, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. The Chamber's never been charged before, so to go from nothing to, we understood 600 to now it's 800, it's a huge impact on us. And we did, to speak to Jerry's thing, we took out all the garbage's and we put everything away and we wiped down, you know, so we did all of the custodial part that goes along with it. The only thing we didn't do was actually roll the chairs and tables back into that room because Jeremy had already rolled them out for us and we didn't know the best way to put them together. I personally would read it the same that Jerry is reading it. If setup is listed with custodial, I would understand it that way, but I don't think the Chamber Board was opposed to paying the $400. It's that extra on a day that we can't bring in revenue because we're trying to set up to try to offset. I mean, there is cost to it, there's, we did use paper towels, not very many in the boys bathroom obviously, it's women's event, but there was, we changed the garbage twice in the women's bathroom, you know, we, we did have garbage bags, we went through, you know, so there's that cost to that. But I kind of agree that if you price yourself too high and we look elsewhere to hold the event, we're taking all those people away from downtown.
So what's, what's your plan, Council? How, how would you like to see?
I think that we need to come up with a fee for setup day. What do you think guys?
I, I agree, I don't know that we need to come up with a fee for setup.
Is that what you said?
Yeah, for setup day.
I don't know that we need that, because it's probably six people here working, and the lights are on anyway.
Not when you set up a thing though, because you got all these vendors.
Well, maybe there was eight or more.
We had, um...
Were the vendors setting up already?
Um, we, the vendors can come in that evening after 4 to set up, and then we make sure somebody's here till 7, but it was, there was only six of us, seven maybe of us, that did all the setup during the day, and that's just committee members, and then the vendors are just coming in. The reason we do that is because they have to carry so much stuff in, and if you had everybody trying to use the two doors at the same time and then be ready to open the doors at 9 o'clock, we're, you know, it would just be a mess, it's like road construction. You know, that just gives us the time to allow people to bring, bring their stuff in. Ideally for us, we wouldn't have to do that, we'd like to go home when we get it set up, but then the event won't be as successful.
Would it be a waste of time if we just would hold off on any decision till the next meeting so we got time to digest it a little bit or not?
Well, I mean, we, we certainly would want to, if you want to modify the fee schedule, we would bring back an action at the next meeting, that's for sure, yeah, you know, but I'd like to know, but the problem is I'd like to know what that is, so that we could prepare the materials. But if you'd like some more time, we could certainly give you that.
Well, I'm just wondering if the setup falls under more of the gym rent, the use, where it says maximum two hours with no special requirements. Granted, it was more than two hours.
It was, yeah.
But if we could lump setup into that category, where okay, if it's not two hours, if it's four hours, they have to pay more, and that's just for setup, not for an activity, that would go with a rental of the full gym?
We'd probably want to, we'd probably want to bring in, bring back an amendment to the fee schedule that included a setup fee to clarify that that's what it was, what it was. As opposed to somebody like the engineers that just wants to, you know, use the batting cage for two hours or something, you know?
I like, whatever that number is, I haven't quite got that sorted out, but I'd like to see it where we could get using the building.
Well, because according to this, what we have set right now, if it was for a use, which I would say use slash setup for event or whatever, for two hours, it would be $25 for half the gym. Well, they were setting up the whole gym, so say that that would be then $50 for two hours. If they were setting up for four hours, it would be $100 for the setup.
So every two hours it'll go $50?
Yeah.
Because we'd be up to the full day rate then anyway.
For your setup? You were here more than that many hours?
I was like, 7.
I was thinking you were here four hours.
We were set up in four, but then we, we just sit here and let vendors come in, we're not really doing anything.
I want to clarify something, but when you say, Council member, about gym rent to use one half is 50, are you talking about gym rent to use during business hours, 25?
50 is crossed out, it says $25 on 3/8/21. It's what I got off the Tracy City page. I took a picture of it. I took a picture of it.
I need to clarify what that is because I, we have modified it since 3/21.
This is what's on the webpage.
Okay, let me, let me look at that.
Because I didn't look since I come tonight.
What I'm looking at, that I think is the current one that was adopted, is there's two fees on there, and I did think we needed to clarify gym rent used during business hours, $25 per use, as opposed to gym rent used one half, $50 for two hours. We probably should get rid of one of those because it just is confusing, but...
Yeah, because it could fit under the during business hours when they were setting tables.
Right. Well, some of that was not during business hours too, though, you know, so some of it was. I will tell you that this is, the way that this schedule is designed is that it's not designed to be incremental, where it's like $50 or $100 for every two hours. It's, the idea was, if you had somebody that wanted to come in and use it for, the discussion at the time amongst everybody was if you want to have somebody that comes in for like a practice for a couple of hours, we didn't want to charge them a full day's worth. And so we created a two-hour practice rate essentially for that. It's not intended to be incremental.
So if that's a practice rate, then we probably just need to come up with a setup rate?
That's what my, that's what my suggestion was, is that, and then you say you can set up for a certain period of time and we're going to charge you this much for setup, kind of thing.
For you setting it up.
Yeah.
What's that?
For you setting it up.
Not for us.
Well, yeah, right. I mean, we don't actually do the setup, as was pointed out.
We're going to have to reword this.
We have to reword it probably to clear, clarify it, you know?
Not that many things set up though, so I guess we're fussing over something that I don't think comes around very often. I'd rather lower the rate a little bit and get people to use the darn building, so at least we're using it.
If you want to lower the $400 rate, we can certainly do that too. So I, I don't know if that's part of the direction or if that's just...
So do we all need to come up instead of sitting here for another hour?
Yeah.
Going around and around?
We think...
If we all come up with suggestion, email it to Eric?
That's fine.
And then you can have it by the next council meeting?
That would be fine. If you, if you want to just email me, you know, or tell me, you know, what you would like to see, and then as long, hopefully I don't have seven different opinions. I don't know what to do.
But if you do, you bring the seven opinions and then we have to narrow it down by four?
I could do that. I'm, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that. Yep.
Otherwise, we could sit here for...
Okay, yeah, let's just do that.
I'm happy with that.
On a half hour already.
I'm happy with that.
You can just use the email that got sent out about it today and just rip that apart and send it back in.
And I'll clarify what the fee schedule is on the website too.
Okay.
Well, hopefully that will work out.
Thank you, Tara. So right now, can they hold off on making their...
Yeah, we won't build them until this is over.
We'll wait until...
I'll bring that to our meeting on Wednesday.
Yeah, we haven't billed anybody.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks.
Okay, we will move on to the consult calendar.
Motion to approve the March 28 minutes, the municipal accounts payable without breakthrough beverage, approve the library board minutes, and approve Resolution 2022-37, accepting a donation to the Tracy Library.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I had a couple of clarifications on the minutes. In our March 28 minutes, third paragraph, I don't recall hearing Mayor Corman asking for approval of the agenda.
Yeah, I noticed that. I'll bring that up.
And then in the last paragraph, where it's talking about Resolution 2022-31, I think that this sentence is a little misleading here, where it says, Hanson explained that there is a community facilities grant through rural development. However, it would most likely be a loan, not a grant. Okay, I think I'd be more accurate to say Hanson explained that there is a community facilities financing program available through rural development, however, would be, most likely be a loan, not a grant. Do you see the distinction?
I'm up for that.
Can we change that name?
Yep.
You? Any other further discussion? Roll call, please.
Chiefs.
Hi.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Klugman.
Yes.
Powell.
Hi.
Landay.
Hi.
Shones.
Hi.
Mayor Corman.
Hi. Do we have a motion with breakthrough beverage?
Uh-uh. Nope.
Not being listened to.
I'll make the motion to approve municipal accounts payable to breakthrough beverage.
Second.
First and second, any further discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Shones.
Hi.
Powell.
Hi.
Landay.
Hi.
Klugman.
Yes.
Mayor Corman.
Yes. So it looks as though we have one person for the library board appointment.
That's great.
And nobody for the charter communication appointment.
And that's all to your turn because it's filling all those roles, shouldn't?
Peggy's?
Mm-hmm. Or whatever you decide to do with this.
So is all of everybody in favor of Peggy Peterson being on the library board? Okay, do we need to do a roll call for that or no?
Need a motion, uh, roll call now.
I make a motion to appoint Peggy Peterson to the library board.
Which one of you are second now?
Who did?
Oh, I thought those two both did at the same time.
No, it was good.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Klugman.
Yes.
Powell.
Hi.
Landay.
Hi.
Chiefs.
Hi.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Shones.
Hi.
Mayor Corman.
Hi.
Mayor, I, wasn't, we're going to disband, there was one of these commissions we were going to disband, was that the charter?
We did. It was the, no, we can't, we can't get rid of the charter commission, that's for sure. No, we disbanded the cable commission.
Oh, okay.
You, there was nobody on it and you hadn't appointed it in years.
Yeah.
It was kind of like an appendix, you know, you can take it out and no one notices.
Well, is there someone on this charter commission already?
Yeah.
Several.
Yeah, there's seven. We have to have nine. Here's the ironic thing, if you want to lower the number, you can, but we have to fill it to nine before we can get rid of them because they actually have to meet in order to make that happen. But that's something for you to consider because we're having a heck of a time getting nine people on that, you know?
Is seven acceptable or...
Yeah, I think it's acceptable in state law, but I... You think it is? We have to have nine by state law? Maybe I'm wrong about what I just told you. We'll look into it.
Check on it.
Yeah, we'll check on it because this is, this is tough, you know, because if we ever had a charter change, we're basically hamstrung because it has to go through them first, you know?
And council people cannot be on the charter commission, right?
It's my understanding, yeah.
See what the law is as far as what the minimum requirement is.
We'll work on the law, yeah.
Yeah, work on the law.
We'll work on finding what the law is.
Sounds good.
Okay, Mr. Administrator, would you like to do your report?
Sure. I just want to point out a couple of things, just for the public's benefit. We did apply for the DNR grant for Central Park for the playground equipment. Again, that was due at the end of the, end of this March. We'll know that sometime in July, just like last year, so cross our fingers on that. We're kicking off our, we received a grant for looking at and doing an intensive survey of this building to try to get this building on the national register. You might remember then that we could tap into some funds for maintenance for this building from the Historical Society. And that grant kicks off this week, and so they'll be, you know, reviewing this building and that'll be done in September. You do have a Board of Equalization meeting next week at 7:00 here. Everybody would have received notice, you would have received notice about that anyway as a taxpayer, but, but you could show up and ask about your property tax at the meeting starting at 7:00 next week. And so we're going to have that meeting. The, there's a group that's meeting, of citizens that's meeting under the Community Artists and Residents Program, and we're having another meeting about that tomorrow morning. And people are kind of starting to discuss the idea about what a community art project might look like. And so that's continuing to happen as well. And so, you know, I think we'll have some future discussions about what that means in a few months. And I don't know, those are kind of some of the highlights. It's been really busy because we've been really pushing along the street project, which you're going to see a lot of action on tonight, because we, once we got the pond decommissioning bid awarded at the end of March, then we have to kind of push through the design of Center Street, which is the next piece that's happening. And the county is giving us some money for that, and so we're going to see some action on an agreement with the county on, on their contribution and the special assessments tonight and then the approval of design because rural development has to approve the changes to our agreement to allow that to happen. And so we're pushing that along to have that happen. So hopefully we can get that bid by the end of May is the current schedule, so they can start construction on that this summer too. And so we've been spending a lot of time working on that project. It's taking up a considerable amount of Shane and mine and Kyle Renick's who's here tonight time. Those are kind of some of the highlights of, you know, what's been going on in the city.
And I don't know if this question is for you or Kyle, but how are we coming, are we, are we going to get the sidewalks and driveways done this year? I mean, have they found somebody to do this?
Yeah, I mean, that project, the RNG construction, you're talking about the current, the current project, which is the Phase 3A2 that, where there's still some sidewalks and driveways that are missing? Yes, that project will be done this summer.
Okay, they found someone to do it.
Well, they always had somebody to, oh, you mean last year? Because that really had to do with the fact that it was the end of the season more than anything else. And, and so they just ran out of time in terms of being able to find somebody to do it. That won't be an issue that now because they have plenty of time this year. And so that really had to do with the timing.
Okay.
If we were in Florida or something, we'd have poured that concrete by now.
But Eric, have they notified us and said when they're going to be coming and...
No, in fact, I asked Shane about that.
I did hear more today.
Okay. Why don't you come up and answer that question, Kyle? Because I asked Shane that question this morning and we didn't know the answer yet. So what did you hear about that, Kyle?
So I had heard from our contractor that they are looking at giving the public some notices here this week, handing out some flyers about their startup work. And they're looking at coming in next week to start setting up temporary water, water mains for the utility work. They have to put those in place a week or more in advance to do some testing and things like that. And then they are looking at maybe reclaiming or grinding up the remaining streets. And then they thought that their concrete contractor was pending weather and getting all, you know, the frost and the moisture out of the ground, looking to be in by the end of April. So in a couple of weeks here, that last week, April, to start with the driveway and sidewalk work that was still left over from the fall.
Kyle, how many blocks, excuse me, how many blocks have to be milled up yet?
I believe it's six that are left on the list.
Could you refresh everyone's memory and just state which streets those are, which blocks?
Testing, it'd be Roland and Morgan Street from fourth to sixth, that, those areas. So I think on, on the map, like I said, there's about six blocks there that have not happened in that southeast corner of the project.
And then two blocks at fifth. It'd be from fourth to sixth is two blocks.
Sure, yep.
On Roland and Harvey.
Yeah, on fifth, yep. The Roland and Harvey blocks and then the fifth, fifth street, yep, so six blocks total, okay.
Do you have no idea when they're going to come and do driveways and stuff for them?
Like I said, that's kind of tentatively scheduled for the end of April here, for the concrete guys to get in, for the driveways and sidewalk parts that are left over. Yep, so maybe in two weeks. We'll see what the schedule brings.
Will that constitute stopping the penalty that they're paying once they start or...
Well, what they'll have to do is they'll, that work will have to be completed and then we'll have to go do an inspection and then certify that it's substantial completion for milestone one, is that right?
Yep.
So, so at that...
Will they complete the sidewalks and the driveways?
The penalty is going to keep going.
Penalty is still going, yes, that's correct.
Even if they start, until they get far enough along to satisfy cities' needs.
Yes, yes.
What's still high on their list here is whether it permits to get in and finish that up.
Kyle, does RNG have a target date for getting the whole project done this year?
I asked for that and I haven't seen that yet, a full summer schedule. So I'll plan to pass that along when I get that.
What is the date in the contract that's required for...
It's a fall date. I don't know it offhand, but if they're in right...
September, but I...
Yeah, that's, that's what I have in my head too. I can get back to you on a final date, but if they're really in here working...
Substantial completion?
Yeah.
There's a date in the contract for substantial completion that they have to get done by? And the penalties on not meeting that are much higher than the penalties on milestone one, they're like 10 times. So...
More than that even.
They have until, to complete those six blocks, they have until, you know, September, October.
So when they come back at the end of April, will they also be looking at property owners that have cracks in their sidewalks or driveways?
There are a few things from last year as well that in, any of the new, any of the new concrete work, they could either look at it and work on it right now, but for sure it would be part of the punch list here at the end of the season that would, would need to be addressed.
So how do people make sure they're on that punch list? If people out there know that they have concerns with it, do they let Shane know or...
Either one.
I think it's something that too, that we'll, we'll take a walk through things right away and likely mark up everything right away. So somebody might be able to walk out and see some pink paint on their sidewalk that is marked out, we know about it. So if that's something that I think would maybe help with that.
So if they have an issue and there's no paint on it, then they can contact Shane or Eric so that you guys can address it?
Yeah, you contact the staff, then we'll make sure it gets on the punch list and we'll look at it.
So over the course of the coming weeks when we meet with the contractor and get things going, we'll walk through and take a look at all that.
I'm not assuming you'll miss any spots, but just...
Yep, that's a good question, yep.
And we, you know, what we've done, and you know, Shane and myself and Kyle and Tim, who's the, you know, the superintendent here that's kind of managing things on the ground, you know, every time we do the preliminary acceptance or the final, I mean, we walk the whole project, you know, literally, literally walk it. So we'll, we'll do that again, you know, at the end of the, end of the project, and we find stuff all the time. And, and I, and, you know, and then Kyle tells us why, you know, that's not a problem or why we should fix that or not fix that, and we work our way through it.
I just don't want citizens coming after the fact saying, well, there's this and they didn't fix it. They need to have an avenue to go so we can then say, did you report it?
They have an avenue, but I, but I want to clarify something that's really important because those fixes don't go on forever.
No.
You know, at some point, so I mean, let's say we accept the project and give them final acceptance and say, this is the punch list and you complete the punch list. You know, sometime in spring of 2023 and somebody comes along and says, oh yeah, by the way, there's a crack in my driveway. Well, we're probably, we're already beyond that period unless it's a warranty item or something like that. You know, we're, we're not going to be able to address that. So I don't want people to feel like there's an open-ended avenue to fix everything all the time. There's a window and it needs to be...
So what's that window for people to know?
What would you, what would you say would be...
Well, ideally, we would wrap it all up with the punches. If it's a known issue this summer, I think, you know, later on in the summer, we, we should know pretty well on where things are at. I think it's something that's totally fine where, you know, along with some of our publications, we put out our, our phone numbers and email addresses, and if people want to get ahold of me or Tim, we'll, we'll add it to the list right then and there, so it's already on the list months in advance. That's fine too. Like I said, we'll try to go through and...
Couple of years, it's still under warranty, right?
There is a warranty for, I gotta look back, at least a year, but, but sometimes two, depending on what it is. So if there is some significant issue that presents itself over next winter, that there's some recourse there too.
I want to caution that. I mean, your warranty doesn't mean that I get every single little thing that I don't like about how this looks fixed. It has to be some kind of defect...
Yeah, legitimate work, you know, defect or workmanship type issue. Yeah, defect or workmanship type issue.
Yeah, no. There's going to be natural wear and tear on concrete and roads and things like that.
On the Center Street project, is that going, that's not going to get narrowed, is it?
No. No.
Not the plan to be.
Not likely.
I think there's maybe a block or two that's a little bit narrower than the rest of it that might get widened, but I don't think it's going to be a noticeable difference from where it is right now.
So there'll still be parking just on one side?
Correct.
We're working on a plan for that. I mean, ultimately, we'll bring it back to you. The county's already told us they don't really want to pay for additional widening. And so there's a financial constraint there.
Yeah.
And so, and we recognize that we want to keep parking on that, you know, west side of the street. And so what we're working on right now is a plan to keep that parking in. You know, I added biclaim and figure out how people can get around, you know, on all those things of where the sidewalks are going to go. That's not complete yet, but ultimately you'll approve the plans and specs. Is it in two weeks?
It'd be potentially at the next meeting.
Potentially at the next, next meeting, you'll see the full plans and specs. We're pushing along actually really fast right now.
That's good, because it's only going to cost more as we go forward.
That's true, for sure.
Scary. Is it affecting your office, you starting to bump up your estimates or not yet?
I, I mean, like everything, there's, there's certain parts of it. We're seeing some of the things like the earthwork, like we saw at the decommissioning project. That stuff is still relatively steady. Some kinds of concrete pipe are going up a bit, asphalt's going up a little bit with fuel prices. But yeah, we're seeing, seeing some changing.
Yeah. Scary situation. Thank you.
Those are kind of the main things at the moment, unless anybody has any other questions. So, that's all I got. Ready to move to new business, man?
Yes.
Okay, so the first few items are related to the two events that we're putting together, Aloha Night like we did last year, and this new event that I've told you about, Burgers Bands and Brews, which is going to be a fundraiser for the Tracy Area Community Foundation. There's two pieces to each one of these. One is, you know, they have to have a temporary liquor permit. You know, we do this like for the chamber for Boxcar Days, for example. And per your new policy that we adopted a year ago, not quite a year ago, it would have been last spring, sometime before we did Aloha Night, they have to have a permit to have alcohol in the, in the parks. And so that's what these, these next four items are.
What, what is our, and I don't want to jinx it, but what is our plan, if it's inclement weather, for the burgers and stuff?
We are tentatively planning on purchasing a insurance policy that would pay us for our expenses if we have an issue. In all likelihood, it would probably mean the event isn't going to happen. And so that's our, our current thought at the moment. We kind of had to decide by the end of this week on that, but, but there isn't really a good option, you know, for where else you would go, you know, with something like that. You could, but I don't, you know, we're hoping to have a lot of people. I don't even know if this gym would hold enough. But I don't know, what are your thoughts? I mean, do you think we should look at an inside rain date or another, a rain?
Or a rain date, I don't know, I, I guess.
The rain date is a challenge because, you know, we're, we're, we're booking some, some, some bands that, you know, they're going to want to get paid no matter what and they might have another gig on a different night, you know? And so that's kind of a hard thing to, to do.
Wouldn't a band in here, it'd all be awful.
Oh, it's awful though.
The reverb answers. And thought through the band part, just the heat.
So that's what our thinking is anyway. I mean, there's a decent cost to that insurance policy, but-
What about if it rained if, if we talked to the caboose if it rained, if we could have it out there?
Usually still wouldn't have enough space.
No.
Not if you're setting up bands and that.
And a chamber tent like they get for their beer tent, that would not be big enough either, probably.
Well, space-wise, this, this is bigger than the caboose is.
I mean, our, our hope honestly on this event, I mean, we're, we want to get four or 500 people. I mean, we're, we're shooting for a big event. The Tracy Area Community Foundation, you know, they've all committed to selling individual tickets. And this is going to be kind of a small cover charge event, just so that we can track the attendance more than anything else. And then you, you would get some food with that, but, you know, your drinks would be extra, that kind of thing. So, you know, we, we think with, you know, the involvement of the foundation and other, you know, members of the community and that, that this could be a fairly big event. And if that's the case, yeah, we'd have a hard time finding an indoor location for something like that.
Well, let's hope the weather is decent.
I know you haven't made any announcement as to who the bands or anything are, but how, what kind of money are we talking? I mean, is it definitely worth the insurance policy because of what we would be paying to book the bands?
You know, the bands, one of the, one of the bands-
It's not like it's a Tracy community band.
One of the, one of the bands is going to cost us some money and the others won't. And so we're kind of trying to balance that, but not a huge amount. I can tell you that Jeff has already sold enough sponsorships to more than pay for the bands at this point. And so we're, you know, we're not going to be out any costs in the context of the bands because the sponsorships are already sold. And we're talking, we've, we've also talked to the pork producers about essentially providing food. And they want a small donation, which would also be covered. And so from our perspective, we don't think that there's a lot of risk. It's just an issue of the expenses associated with, you know, what we would lose potentially on, you know, people, you know, liquor sales, a lot of which is going to go to the foundation and things like that. So we're working through this. I don't have a lot of details yet. We actually have a planning meeting tomorrow morning to talk about this. And we've got most of the logistics kind of worked out on this. But if you give us another week, I think we'll have all of the specific details nailed down enough.
Do you need our approval for the, to purchase, to spend the money on the insurance?
No, I don't, because it's small enough, it would be well with, under, you know, your policy for that requirement. No, no, I don't need your approval on that. The approval tonight is essentially the permit for the alcohol is essentially, you know, your permit, permits for the events, you know, for these two events. And that would be, that, that would be all the approvals that would be necessary.
So Eric, is the City of Tracy sponsoring this event jointly with the Community Foundation?
I would say that the City of Tracy isn't really a sponsor of the event. The liquor store is going to be providing the liquor. And, you know, to a certain extent, you know, we're going to share the proceeds with the Community Foundation, but, but, you know, the liquor store is essentially the, the involving, you know, entity is what it amounts to. So I wouldn't say we're necessarily a sponsor.
Okay, so it's the Community Foundation's event, really?
It, it kind of is in, in collaboration with the Tracy, with Boxcar Liquors, yeah, essentially.
Because I'm kind of confused, if we're not sponsoring it, why would we pay for the insurance?
Well, because the, the liquor store involvement essentially becomes our event at that point. And we're the fiduciary agent, so we're going to collect the money and then parse it back out again, essentially. And because, so I, when you say sponsor, that says something different to me than maybe what you're thinking of. What, what I'm responding to, when I say sponsor, I, I think of it like event sponsors. But it is kind of a joint City of Tracy event with the Community Foundation, yes.
Well, the Community Foundation, that's the SWIFT program, okay.
Yep. So what we would do with Aloha Night is the same thing we did last year. Is that, that was a, an event that raised money for the school foundation. And this event would be one that's raising money for the Community Foundation. And so they're both kind of charitable events, I guess you could say, but also community events at the same time. And we kind of like that approach because we think that engages more people and ultimately that's, that's what we're trying to accomplish.
Well, do we have to do these one at a time?
Yep. You want a time?
I'll make a motion to do 2022-32 Aloha Night. Hopefully it's warm that night.
Second.
First and second, any further discussion?
All I would say to that is it was a lot of fun last year, so.
We'll wait till you see the cocktails this year.
Well, the cocktails didn't interest me as much as-
Something special coming this year.
It just was good getting together and not a lot of swimming going on because it was too chilly, but it was just nice.
Okay, roll call, please.
Town.
Aye.
Chiefs.
Aye.
Landite.
Aye.
Schmidt. Hootman.
Yes.
Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Carmen.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-33 for the burger bans and brews.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hootman.
Yes.
Landite.
Aye.
Chiefs.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Town.
Aye.
Mayor Carmen.
Aye.
I'll make my resolution 2022-34 approving the temporary liquor license for Aloha Night as long as the fees are paid.
I'll second it.
First and second, any further discussion? Oh, roll call, please.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Hootman.
Yes.
Landite.
Aye.
Chiefs.
Aye.
Town.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Carmen.
Aye.
I'll make a motion for Resolution 2022-35 approving the temporary liquor license for burger brands and burgers, bands and brews as long as the fees are paid.
First and second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Jones.
Aye.
Hootman.
Yes. Aye.
Town.
Aye.
Landite.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Mayor Carmen.
Aye.
The next item, number five, Resolution 22-36 is a grant to get ARPA money for the airport. Is what it amounts to. This is some federal COVID relief money. And we have to do this in order to get, get their money.
And ARPA, American Recovery Act?
Yep.
I don't think these numbers are matching up, just so you know. Resolutions. Yeah, I, I already got that to the curve, yep.
Thirty-seven is up in the consent calendar.
I know, but thirty-four. It's fixed.
Okay.
Just so it matches up with our motions. It does. Okay. So I'll approve Resolution 2022-36 to authorize, to execute the Minnesota Department of Transportation agreement.
I'll second this.
First and second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Town.
Aye.
Hootman.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Landite.
Aye.
Chiefs.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Carmen.
Aye.
The next item, number thirty-eight, is a gambling permit for Aloha Night. I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, but Blue Chair Bay Rum is one of the sponsors of the event. As part of their sponsors, they are providing a signed Kenny Chesney guitar to raffle off and potentially some other items as well. And so that'll be part of the event, and so that's what this is, is for, is for that raffle.
Is there a certain amount of tickets that go with that or just as many as you can sell?
No, I think it's as many as you can sell, yeah, yeah. So we, we haven't decided how that's going to work yet. Most likely it'll, you'll get some raffle tickets with your entry and then you can buy more kind of thing, you know, to get into it. But it's, it's a cool, it's a cool price, you know? And they're going to be there that night with samples and lots of other swag. And, you know, we'll have some special drinks and things like that. And so I, I think it'll help, you know, it'll certainly improve the event, for sure.
So these raffle tickets, they would be sold at the liquor store?
We could sell them at the liquor store. We haven't worked out the details on that yet.
This is just to give you a permit?
This just gives a permit to do it, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-38 to approve a gambling permit for the Aloha Night.
I'll second that.
First and second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Schmidt. Chiefs.
Aye.
Landite.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Town.
Aye.
Hootman.
Yes.
Mayor Carmen.
Aye.
The, the last three items are related to the Center Street improvements and the process that we have to go through, the state requirements on special assessments. And so I'm going to have Kyle Renneke come up and talk through what, what these three items are and explain them.
All right, so we touched on this a little bit earlier, Eric did, but these are, with the recent bids that we have for the Pond decommissioning, we're able to move forward with the authorization with USDA rural development and the county on the Center Street part of the project here. And obviously we've been discussing this as the, the next step. And now that we know that, you know, where funds are at, that, that it's a feasible project, that we're moving things forward here. These resolutions are related to that assessment process that Eric mentioned, Minnesota statutory process that needs to be followed to be able to assess some of these properties along the Center Street. Fortune in the work. And tonight, I'm bringing to you these resolutions or I guess the city is proposing the resolutions for the ordering, preparation of a report on the improvements. And since this report was prepared back in 2018 for this greater project, it's already done at this point and provided the updated cost estimate that we included as well. That would serve as a feasibility report for the project. So it's something that the council could accept from there. And then the next step in this initial part of the project is inviting the, the public and those properties to a hearing on the improvements. So this improvement hearing would be, we would potentially could set a date and time for that here as well with the last resolution, which would put public notice in the newspaper and mailed notices to the residents or properties that would be assessed with part of the project. So it'd invite them to that improvement hearing meeting to discuss, to hear more about that project and to ask any questions and provide their, I guess, thoughts and input on it as well.
Kyle, at the improvement hearing, will the property owners hear a, or see a proposed assessment? Or at what point is the City of Tracy determining what their tentative assessment?
At that meeting, we'll have a tentative assessment amount. It won't be a final amount necessarily, but it would be something that typically you're going to get a lot of questions on that as a council or us as engineer or staff. And I think it's something that we don't necessarily have a specific assessment listed since we don't, since the city doesn't have a policy and maybe Eric can, a specific policy related to that. But I think with those questions, it, we could discuss what the past projects, you know, assessment amounts have been and what that, what, give, give people an idea what to expect.
The practice throughout this phase of the project has been that it's essentially a $7,500 assessment. And it has been that way for Phase 3A1 and then Phase 3A2. And so generally speaking, what we would say at this point is it would be up to $7,500. And although we don't have a formal assessment policy, I think that has been your practice in the past is to try to treat everybody kind of similarly. And so you won't actually have the assessments on this project until that's complete sometime in 2023. This is basically just the preliminary hearing, that kind of, preliminary is not the right word, but this is essentially the, the hearing on the improvements themselves. The final assessments won't be indicated until probably November, October 2023, something like that, when the project is, is complete.
Is there a cap where the assessment can't go over a certain? Is there a cap where the assessment can't go over a certain amount? Did you say that?
Yeah, we'll say up to $7,500 in this particular case. Are you asking, is there a legal, is there a legal cap?
Well, I didn't know, you know.
That's just what we've done on the other projects.
That's what we've done on the other projects, but I, 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 there is a, there are some, I wish Matt were here to explain this because.
From a legal standpoint, the property being assessed must gain the value, at least equal to or more than the value of the assessment. So the intent being that they're being assessed, but their property value should be increasing with that as well.
Run into any issues along there?
We haven't so far. In the past, yes, there were some issues that some of you might remember on the Fourth and Morgan project. But we have not yet at this point run into issues related to how much people were paying for fees 3A1 or 3A2, which is why we generally would suggest you do a similar kind of thing or the same thing that you did previously because if, you know, it was acceptable for those parts of the project, you know, we think it would be acceptable for these parts of the project because the improvements are substantially similar.
I don't, I don't mean to interrupt, I'm sorry, but how does that relate where the county is kicking in some money? Does that give us a chance to?
That's, 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 that's a, that's a good question. That's a good question. What I will tell you is, is that we were having a discussion about that earlier today. And a lot of the, most of the assessments, if not all the assessments, correct me if I'm wrong on this, pardon Kyle, but were related to the water and sewer and storm sewer portions of it, which the county is not paying for. The county is only paying for the, the road portion of it.
Okay.
And so, and then, and this, and we'll be paying for the sidewalks portion of it too as well. And so I, I, I don't think it would affect it in this particular case because, because of what, the way we had done it previously.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Am I saying that correctly?
Yeah, so in, in past projects, I think it's been looked at from a couple of different angles. One of them was breaking things out between a sewer, a water, a storm and a street charge. And, and, and depending on, I think maybe a lot of front footage or I guess there are a few variables that played into that. If people have multiple lots and things like that, some assessments might have been higher or lower, but if they were above that $7,500 mark, it was capped at that. And generally if we're doing the full sewer, water, storm sewer, that, the amount of even those assessments would, would probably meet that $7,500 mark. I think we've seen a couple of lower ones where we did just a water service or just a sewer service because it went one direction to one street and their other service went the other way, that we maybe would have a lower amount than that $7,500 mark.
I do, I, I'm sorry, I apologize.
No, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to clarify one thing too, and this is a small nuance, but I think it's important to point out. So essentially the, the county contribution is coming from what's called the local road improvement program. It's a state program. So, but we are too small because we're under 5,000 people to get that money directly. So that's why we're partnering with the county, so they have an allocation of that money. And so it's coming from, from, from them directly, but it actually comes to the county from the state. So that's, that's where that money is coming from. But the agreement will be with the county for the local road improvement dollars.
I just wanted to comment on the question of whether the City of Tracy council has a formal assessment policy.
We don't.
And, and I guess I was always under the impression that after that Fourth and Morgan project, which was challenged by some property owners in court.
Yes.
That, then the council's action after that to set the fee, I think they might have called it a hookup fee of $7,500.
Yep.
I, I kind of always assumed that that was the council or city's de facto assessment policy from time going forward.
I would classify it as a practice amount of policy.
Okay.
My, my personal view is that you should have a special assessment policy. We should. One of the first things that happened actually when I, when I got here, and I didn't know much about special assessments to be honest, because I came from Colorado and you can't do special assessments in Colorado. They don't exist there. So from, from my perspective, it was kind of a new thing. And so, you know, at the time, people said, well, this is what we did for Phase 3A1, so let's just do the same thing for Phase 3A2. And it made sense from the standpoint of, you know, fairness and equity. But my personal suggestion to you would be that for future projects, we ought to set a poli, an actual written policy so that, so that we don't run into these issues in the future. Because if you don't have a policy, then people start to say that, well, it's arbitrary. Well, you charged me this and you charged this guy this amount and that's not fair. So if you had, if you had an equitable policy, I think that would insulate you against those kinds of future concerns.
Well, Eric, I wholeheartedly agree with that recommendation, that we need to have a policy, not a practice.
I know, which I was on the assumption of you. I thought we had that in policy.
No, it's just, it's just the way we've done it.
The only question I'd have on that is, once we're done with what we're doing there, we're going to hold up for a little bit, I'm guessing, until we can regroup our finances.
Yep.
That, that assessment may not even be close to what we need if we move forward with another project. So by setting policy for this, we could be tying our hands for 10 years down the road, say. I don't.
There's, there's a couple of different ways you could look at a policy. It doesn't have to be a dollar amount. It could be a percentage, you know? You could base it, you could say, we want to recover X percentage of the project. There's some legal requirements where you have to cover at least a certain amount, but you could cover more. And then you could say, well, we want to take that cost of that project and, and split it equitably amongst all the property owners. And that might mean that everybody gets the same dollar amount or it might be based on the frontage to the project. But, but the policy wouldn't be an X dollar amount necessarily, although it could be. It might just be setting a, this is how we, this is our calculation for what the assessment should be, if that makes sense.
Isn't that where the trouble came with Morgan Street? It was a percentage and the, the dollar amounts got so high?
No, it wasn't a percentage, but it was based on front foot and the amount of square feet you had on your lot. And there was a whole formula. And it was, and it varied a lot from property.
But that was the concern, I think, of people. And, and like I said, there's a different way to do it. I mean, let's say you want to charge 20% of the project to special assessments and we want every lot to pay the exact same amount and do the math and that's what it is. You know, I mean, that's one way to do a policy. There's, there's lots of different options. And I, I think, like you said, council member, our recommendation to you is, is that because we've been doing it this way for the Phase 3A project, we should continue to do it the same way for the remainder of the project. But then after this is over, we ought to evaluate, is this a good way to do it the next time or should we develop another way that's equitable and fair for the next phase of the project?
I agree. We can't change it for the upcoming.
Yeah.
Right, I, I guess I agree with that. I just don't want to tie our hands for 10 years down the road.
I, I, you never, anytime you adopt something like that, you never tie your hands because you, you know, you're the council. If you set a policy, you can always change it, right? I mean, that's, was the spirit of the conversation earlier tonight, right? But, but, but I, I think that for, for people, they, they want to make sure that they're paying their fair share and that somebody isn't paying more than their fair share or less than their fair share. And, and that's, that's really what it boils down to is what's, what's fair. And so kind of thinking through that, I, I think would, would be a good thing.
Well, and we're not the only city that does special assessments. So there's got to be examples out there.
Exactly. There's plenty of examples. I think it's something that you could take a look at a number of examples from the surrounding communities to see what those dollar amounts look like. And then I think you could also just look back at these past projects and say, if we would have applied this to the past project, where would that have turned out? Is it similar to what we thought was fair at that time?
We'll have a history by then on three different projects.
Yep.
I think it's something that, you know, a few examples would be good to go through.
So Eric, excuse me, do we pay for what's underground and county pays above ground? Is that what it is?
Yeah, kind, kind of, yeah.
Why are we paying for the sidewalk then?
Because the local road, road improvement dollars that come from the state will not pay for sidewalks. It'll pay for road and curb and gutter, and I think there's some storm sewer potentially in that too, but we're limited to what the state will pay because that's where the money's coming from.
Do they have sidewalks now?
There are sidewalks on both sides in different parts of Center Street. That's what we're trying to clean up is to try to give a, a full sidewalk, at least in, on one half of the street. I'm not sure where we're at with that exactly at the moment. You want to comment on the sidewalks?
There are a couple tough blocks, but the, the goal at the start of it was just to connect from one end, from South Street all the way to Trump Highway 14. And I think we had one time where you would have to cross center in there. We're looking at getting it all onto one side and what that would look like for people's driveways. We don't want to put a sidewalk in somebody's front yard where they can't park a car in the driveway anymore or things like that, where we're being too disruptive. But there's a few, few things we're looking at there.
And the improvement hearing, that's where property owners will be able to learn what's planned for their.
Exactly, yep.
Yep. Thank you. I'll make a resolu, make a motion for Resolution 2022-39 ordering the preparation of report on improvement.
I'll second. First and second, any further discussion? Roll call please.
Town.
Aye.
Chiefs.
Aye.
Hootman.
Yes.
Shones.
Aye.
Landite.
Yeah, aye.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Mayor Carmen.
Aye.
Motion to approve Resolution 2022-40 to receiving the feasibility report.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Hootman.
Yes.
Landite.
Aye.
Chiefs.
Aye.
Town.
Aye.
Shones.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Mayor Carmen.
Aye.
So just on this last one, so the public hearing will be just during our regular meeting here at like the 6:45.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-41.
I don't know if you have any more discussion on that, on the timing on that, but.
No, that's fine. I was just making sure that it was just during our normal meeting, that that was just the public hearing part of it.
Do we need to know more?
Well, the one question I guess I have is if, if we send out 58 notices and we should have that many people show up, is it something we can move that part to the gym or just a heads up on that piece of the, the puzzle? I'm not saying that we're going to have 58 people show up, but it's just one of the logistics pieces.
I mean, this other project probably had more homeowners than this one.
Yeah, there were more properties on the previous one.
Yeah, where I would think we could fit if we have.
Perfect. We're, we're not going to have 58 people.
We'll cross that originally.
If we have five, you'll have.
Did we get a second on that?
No.
I'll do that.
First and second, any further discussion? Roll call please.
Shones.
Aye.
Hootman.
Yes.
Yes.
Town.
Aye.
Landite.
Aye.
Chiefs.
Aye.
Mayor Carmen.
Aye.
I, I have one question for you though, Kyle.
Yeah.
The, like in past projects, like you've done something in the gym, like put up the maps and everything. Are you doing that again?
Well, that would have probably been the same, same hearing. Can you come up with that? Sorry. Yep, that would have been at the improvement hearing. So it's something that I think that we could, we could put those up and people could take